Two. By bringing and leaving of. Four. Six to be.
Second.
Motion to be in second. Call or oppose?
Mr. Lombardi. Mr. Bassett.
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
And Mrs. Pla.
Yes.
Superintendent, your appointment, you want to identify?
As a third, please to bring forward the name.
What?
Ice. Alan Seebie. For Director of Facilities, North Smithfield School Department. We advertised for a new Director of Facilities. We had fourteen applicants. We narrowed it down to five individuals, all very knowledgeable and very talented. However, Mr. Seebie was so far above everybody else. He has thirty-five years' experience from Providence. He's worked his way up through the ranks. He's been down just above every single maintenance facility, planning job that the city had offered, to the point where today he is Director of Operations for the city and the school department entirely. Overseeing public works, talk to recreation, all municipal and school facilities, and purchasing for the city. He has about four necessity of construction applications successful behind him. He has planned and built about two to three hundred million dollars' worth of new schools and additions and renovations. I cannot think of a more knowledgeable, experienced person in the entire state that he would like to come and work here with us. So I am very proud to recommend Alan Seebie as the new Facilities Director.
When will we start? That's a little late.
We will, we will be talking tomorrow. He does have some obligations and projects in Providence that he would like to hand off. He will be starting fairly soon, certainly by July first. It may be on a semi-part-time basis for a few weeks until he feels he's left his projects in Providence.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So. Okay, motion to make to appoint Alan Seebie as the Facilities Director.
Second.
Motion to be in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Go to D.
I have a question about D. There are thirty-four employees, teachers and teacher assistants listed for the ESY as being leader for the ESY program. I came out to Superintendent and asked how many students will be participating. There are sixty-seven. Thirty-four employees to handle sixty-seven children just seemed really excessive to me. And I wondered, you know, in comparable districts like Seduette, Turbin, is this a normal ratio for the standard superior program?
ESY programs, being an intensive special education program, is personal heavy. Now, I cannot honestly tell you if this is more personnel-heavy than similar programs in other districts. It is paid for through federal grant funding, so it's not coming out of local funds.
It wasn't a question of the money. I mean, basically, your teacher-student ratio is like one in five.
Right, and I've asked.
Not counting the teachers, you know, the aides.
And I've asked Suzanne to, ten times, so if you would be able to explain?
It does include, it does include people that assist with the alternating and.
You can take that microphone.
I'm sorry.
Suzanne Rock, PBS Director. It does include people that coordinate as well as supervise staff. It includes a summer team, which we have federally mandated to have, given our sixty-day calendar timeline. So we have several people that work on team that do evaluations over the summer. And the students' IEPs have to be met as far as if they have a one-to-one TA during the school year, they need to have that one-to-one during the summer. We also change up the programs a bit because every child can't fit into one mold. So we have a variety of programs, that's the number of teachers. So we have reading programs with students. We have pull-out, we have push-in, we have a variety of programs to meet all of their needs. And we also have a transition program. And we make sure that we have enough staff because part of that is going out into the community and working with the students and jobs.
So you need one staff person for every kid-children?
It's not really that much of a ratio. There seems to be more in the preschool because we have our self-contained preschool and all of our preschool students qualify. And forgive me for saying this, but they're in orthopedic, diapers, to change. So it's pretty, it's pretty hands-on in those programs.
Some of the groupings, we do have some groupings with a teacher and assistant with maybe three or four students. And it really depends on the needs of the students. We do have a nurse IEM because they're also medically qualified for students. There are groupings where it has a teacher and an assistant for ten students. So it really is based on the needs of the individual child.
Is this a different ratio than happens during the school year?
It is a different ratio, but we do provide more intense services because students that qualify for ESY are students that would normally regress if they didn't get this level of service during the summer, which would mean that there would be need to provide more intense services during the school year. So this helps to have them maintain the skills that they learn over the course of the school year. So they're on the mediest of students. And actually, the number has dropped a little bit since last year as far as students and actually teachers. It seems like it's a lot, but it's less teachers than I hired last year, actually.
Any more questions?
I was talking about, what's LBC?
LBC is Language-Based Classroom. So that's our self-contained classroom for our kids who are most significant.
We have a standard of one, so I just wonder about.
Yes, that's very, yes. So in those classrooms during the school year, at times we could have only three students, with sometimes two teacher assistants and a teacher that they are really significant. We don't have severely found classrooms in this district. We don't, and a lot of districts, they don't call them severely found, but those are our most significantly disabled students. Thank you.
Ma'am. So actually, I have one more question. You had mentioned that pre-K, everyone qualifies. Can you expand more on that?
I'm sorry?
I thought you had mentioned, you said something about pre-K, everyone qualifies?
Everyone in the self-contained classroom qualifies because those who are the mediest of kids. But I would say a good number, not all, not the regular students. Only students that qualify for ESY are students that have IEPs. So our peer moms would not be in the summer program. That's the difference. And during the school year, the ratio may seem different, but you also have specialized students and with regular students. These are the most significant kiddos. So everyone in the ESY has an IEP, but all students with special needs.
So how do you, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not familiar with it or I'm not grasping it, but how do you identify in pre-K who is, who is special? I'm not sure, is that an easy thing to do or is it?
Well, they go through. Students go through early intervention.
Yeah.
So students that can be identified at birth if they have Down syndrome or if they have a significant disability, fragile X. So they are identified, it can be identified as long as at birth. But we, the children come to us before their third birthday. So if they go through EI, which is early intervention, they get services in the home. Early intervention presents those students to us and we have team. And then we do our own testing in-house and we determine if they have special needs enough to qualify for specialized instruction. And then we're responsible to provide them with that from age three to age twenty-one.
Thank you. That's what I was missing, is that.
Right.
Do they just show up at the door?
No, sort of.
Well, I know.
And we have to start servicing them, going on their third birthday. So anytime during the school year, they're, they truly are. Yes, it can happen anytime.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion to approve the four C. Four D, I'm sorry, the appointments as stated.
Motion to be made in second. Motion to be in second. All in favor?
Discussion, please. I think there was one other issue that we need to discuss before we vote on, I'm sorry. All right, so, all right, so this is a discussion. It's motion on the floor, discussion. You want to raise it? Yeah, because, well, we received an email. I don't know who received it, but when I received it, I apologize.
Who received it?
I think it was sent to Mr. Lombardi and Susan Seebie on here. And it was brought up, and Superintendent, it was brought up a possible issue with our, or conflict with our nepotism policy. So I don't know. I did receive, we received a response back, Superintendent, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure I agree with it.
To one of the teachers?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Superintendent, you addressed that issue. I know that, at least I looked at the policy itself. And I think you addressed that there is no direct supervision. Is that correct?
Correct. So I did look at the hiring process, the fact that this person is not directly supervised by the person of the relationship. I was aware that there was an issue in the past. I didn't know the extent or if there was any kind of school committee decision at the time. I did look at, I saw the concern, I saw how it relates to the nepotism policy. And it was one of those situations that could go either way. My interpretation of it is that this person had worked here in the past. I've had good reports from this person. And although I could see how it related to the policy, I was more interested in having a good person. However, if you feel that it's too close for comfort, that's understandable. I did make the recommendation that maybe in the future, this person would to do an ESY program and then another position. Again, very close. My interpretation, in the towards, okay, but I recommend it's on closer.
So if I may, just read from the policy. So if you ever, nepotism policy. It says, "Family relationships shall constitute neither an advantage nor a deterrent to appointment and retention, provided the individual may fulfill the appropriate appointment in professional development standards." So in this situation, we can neither say yes or no for that criteria because they're illegal. But then it goes on to say that, you know, "No two persons from the same family may hold positions in which one of them is directly responsible for recommendations or decisions involving the other in such matters as initial appointment, retention, promotion, salary, job benefits, or other job-related functions of a supervisory or evaluative nature." Is that, is, are any of those concepts in there that you know of?
There is a, there is a separation of supervision. So we're not talking a supervisory relationship. And as far as the hiring and the appointment, the person who is hired is more than qualified, certified to do the position. The position is a fixed position, so there is no, can be no favoritism as far as salary or promotion. It is teacher assistant position under the supervision of other.
But the, the policy as we have it, my understanding of it is, no two persons from the same family may hold positions which one of them is directly responsible for recommendations or decisions and around additional appointment. I understand that this would be, it's the school committee that's granting that additional appointment. The request and the recommendation is the issue here. That's how I read it, which is why I didn't, I was inclined to go the other way from doing response.
I understand.
So, wait a minute. So who made the, who made the recommendation of hiring this person? Did you?
There were twenty applicants and thirteen open position. The number of the applicants didn't really want quite, need quite to hear you. So the review was done by the ESY team, not necessarily by the one person who made this determination.
I think some of us are disadvantaged here because you have no idea who you're talking about or what the situation or circumstances are. You already received the nepotism policy. So I don't know how to proceed with this, but I really think that trying to make a decision on this right now is not fair to some of us.
Yeah, for the record, it seems that these four members that maybe did not receive this email are already involved.
I understand. And I'm trying to be very sensitive to the group.
And again, why don't you say this? I received this this afternoon. I was actually reading the policies after executive session to try to get myself up to speed on it. I did receive an email. I really, I mean, I'd rather go to executive session. I don't want to start identifying people on the record. So I understand, I apologize that I am being vague, but that's for a reason. I'm just seeing if we can get through it without identifying the person. But if we can't, then we don't.
How long would we hold this one name?
Well, then you just identify someone.
When is the decision of all? When do you need this big, who files this to work with? So, so this is what we got?
Well, maybe if there are some folks that are waiting for an appointment, otherwise they may for something else.
So can I ask a question? I saw, I heard in the policy, the initial appointment. And you said this person had been employed in North Smithfield in the past.
Right, and then this issue came up in the past.
Okay, so in the past, the hiring happened really same.
Correct.
And was the person, did the person stay or was it?
The previous Superintendent, I believe, said he was not aware of the relationship. Now, at the surface, he's probably not appropriate to continue on. So I believe this person didn't work in the program last year. Two years' guess, last year, no.
When you say issues, is it issues of role surveillance, were there actual issues?
No, not from the individual, just, just the relationship.
Office of someone.
This is family.
So this individual, two years did work for the district, one year didn't. And now is the question again.
Correct.
And the facts and circumstances were the same in all four years?
Evidently.
And was there a problem in the first two years that the person did work here?
This, this was that before this evening.
Should I be, no problem. Would you just read the nepotism policy?
Yeah, I, I heard the notes. All right, so. So the family, family relationships can neither be a danger or a deterrent.
So that doesn't necessarily negate the ability to.
Right, and that's why I'm saying that it almost works both ways. It's neutral. The sentence is, however, "No two persons of the same family may hold positions in which one of them is directly responsible for recommendations or decisions involving the other in such matters as initial appointment, retention, promotion, salary, job benefit, or any other job-related function of a supervisory or evaluative nature."
Which the Superintendent has confirmed that there is enough space, there's levels of management between the two of them. So there isn't a direct.
Is that correct?
That, that is how I interpret this.
So one family member is not directly supervising to whom?
Yeah, I, I'll be honest, I'm not convinced. Because, and I can't even explain why I'm not convinced without giving away any information. I really want to. I can't support this if, if we can't pull it, if we can't, you know, do a special meeting to discuss it or, or something else, I can't support it tonight based upon my reading of the ethical policy. And, and it's, it's not a reflection on the, on the individual, it's not a reflection. It's, we have a policy in place, either we go by it when it's recognized, if, if a conflict is recognized. I think this, in every way, shape, and form, would never pass if I went to my own ethics office and said, can I do this? Can I work in North Smithfield in a financial capacity or a technological capacity? My employer would say absolutely not. Just because it's, it's, I just, it, it doesn't, it's too close for me.
Can we identify the person with just a first letter of a name?
I don't mind speaking to her. Can I speak to it?
Yes.
I really don't mind speaking to it.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not really ashamed to speak to this. It is like, it's my daughter. And she did work for Diane Jolen. So she worked in a capacity in that school as a sub without me supervising at all. And she did a fantastic job. Honestly, it's very difficult to get anyone to come and work in the summer. I do have someone in a supervisory role, so I'm not directly supervising those teacher assistants and or teachers. It's Brittany Robichaud. And making sure that person is specialized, certified, they have the ability to do that. It's a pseudo-administrative role. And they're not being evaluated at the end of the summer. They're not getting a raise. They're literally making ten fifty an hour. And honestly, my daughter was the very last person, before I even made a decision, I sat down with Mr. St. Jean, the last person on the list, I called everyone. And I actually had two people bail on me this week. So it's very difficult to find people. When this came up last year, even though I had someone in the supervisory role, it came up last year and we pulled her name off the list, I voluntarily did that. I will say, what speaks volumes to my daughter's character is that she worked last summer for free and she volunteered for the whole summer. And in that preschool, we did what she needed to do for those kiddos because I couldn't get enough adults to do that at the cost that we're paying them. So I just want to say that I'm not ashamed to say it's my daughter because I have a lot of respect for what she's willing to do. She's going to school to be a teacher. This is experience for her. It's an experience to go in. She wants to become an early childhood teacher. She's at brick. She's a great kid. And I have absolutely nothing to do with those kiddos. Once they go in those classrooms, they just do their job and that's it.
Which, and I want to be clear, I don't know her, I'm not questioning that. It's, the, the, the issue I take with it is, as I read the policy, you run the entire program. It's your program. So it's, it's the appearance of impropriety, even if there isn't anything. And that's where I go so far, is that I can't, I can't resolve those two.
I'm, I'm going to just.
That's where I.
And I choose to get that.
One person. Go ahead. Not Ben.
Actually, I was just going to say that, you know, I heard in the policy, directly responsible. I do not hear in this directly responsible. And at the end of the day, I'm going to, I'm going to put the kids first. And the other thing is, is it said initial appointment. Well, if the initial appointment was she was working with Diane Jolen, then it seems to me that she's already been vetted and been satisfied to many other people. And I don't, I honestly feel, especially in a state as small as Rhode Island, with a population, with what you just get paid, I feel like, I, I don't feel like this is an issue and I'm certainly willing to, I second that.
And I, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I, I don't understand why the charge of nepotism came up and if it came up in an anonymous email or something like that, we don't know. We collectively here don't know. It doesn't feel like that, you know? It feels like this is someone who's really trying to make a difference and we should applaud them as opposed to what kind of feels like we're trying to punish them a little bit. I don't want to blame this person who's been related to this happen. I think if she wants to stand up and make a difference for these kids, we should let her do it.
Especially since she does share interests.
All right, let me just read something that made the call through. So it says, "In cases where this conflict develops, supporting family member will, if practical, be assigned to another supervisor at the appropriate level for all recommendations, decisions, or evaluation." So maybe we can ask, if this is supported, the Superintendent, to make sure that if there's an issue that he then steps in, we need to reassign for that purpose or he reports directly to you in the area of this, that type of.
Well, it sounds like isn't she, isn't she responsible for reporting to her?
She is. And Mrs. Jolen is also present in the building. And I'm sure that she would be happy to have a report to her as well.
So like you said, we really don't have anything else to do with this, is that right?
No, I oversee, Brittany, make sure Brittany is doing her job and she basically runs the program for me.
But I, but just if the Superintendent does see something that's more. I think I'm going to go.
Believe me, if I were supervising, I'd have no problem firing the family member. Just want to put that up there.
Is your move in?
Yes.
Oh, I have to.
To approve or to appoint ESY appointments, ESY.
Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Lombardi.
Aye.
Mr. Bassett.
No.
Mrs. Johannes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mrs. Mayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
No.
Mrs. Pla. Here is five to.
Thank you. Let's go to the reports, Superintendent's report. I bet it's my first year, so please don't care.
And thank you very much for that end of year report. That was really very nice.
Administrative report. Is there anything else, financial report, is there anything else you'd like to say? Can we have the fact?
Do you have, what did we end up with this year, first surplus? Including non-budget expenditures? Well, you know, we had, we spent what, half a million dollars earlier this year because we have anticipated surplus.
So I don't have it done yet. We still have a payroll to go through. Then we're working on all of the income and purchase odds down in the mouth. A lot of times when we go through blankets and stuff, there's excess money in it. It's dumped out.
We're like, ten, ten days away from the end of the year. Do you have any idea what it's going to be?
I think about the original number that I gave, about three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Plus the five fifty that we already spent?
Or the five hundred big bets or a whole year of that.
Right.
Right, but I, I think that's one of the things that, just to keep, be able to track it. Like, I don't, I'd always look for, what was the total surplus for the year? Even though we decided to parse it out, spent some of it. The true surplus is what we spent plus what's left, right? Is that fair?
If you're looking to go from last year to this year, I, we do have a breakdown. Which I think answers your question. Yeah, that's it, yeah.
So to clarify, most of the surplus funds were in the areas of salaries and benefits and they're made up. And we do have a very detailed list of that. Most of them were made up of unpaid fees, workers' comp fees, things of that nature, internal.
Okay, so the old budget, I mean, the business, fiscal year seventeen operating budget. Do you have any questions on that? Fiscal year operating, fiscal year eighteen operating, that whole budget. Obviously, that's before the.
Can I just, can I say something about that? At our main meeting, we had a conversation about math interventionists. And it's been weighing on me ever since then that we have seventy-five students at the middle school who need math intervention but are not receiving. And I spoke to Claire right after the meeting. And she explained to me the philosophy, which I agree with, that we are starting with math interventionists at Powell and at NSC. which I agree with, that we are starting with math interventionists at Howell and at NSCS, so that eventually, we won't have a need for them at the middle school. And correct me if I'm not explaining that correctly, but basically, is that it?
Yes, I think we don't currently have that NSCS.
Oh, okay.
Before we built anything at the middle school, before we went from more at the middle school, I would want to build like a minimum level of intervention at NSCS. So currently, we have zero at NSCS.
Okay, but isn't that one of the things that we are potentially putting in the budget?
Potential, yes.
Okay, okay. So I just want to put out there that I'm, I would like to, hopefully, once we get our budget, maybe find money for at least a halftime interventionist to be at the middle school. So I just want that, that out there.
And I agree with you.
And that's, my concern is the ones that were just not needed. I know that we'll eventually get there with the, you know, the work that we're doing at the elementary schools, but I'm concerned about those kids.
Hey, anybody have any other questions? The policy on funding CTEs, I'll pick this over to the next meeting, obviously, if we can see what the budget looks like, we'll discuss that. The administrative's financial package, selection contracts. I was confused about, I was gonna say, do you want to talk about this? I know that we need to wait for thirty days, so that's why I got a little confused. I know we went back and forth for a little bit. Is it supposed to be on this agenda? No, I think originally, I said that we would put it on this agenda to have another contract. However, the second meeting is scheduled for the twenty-ninth, which we no longer have that ninth a lot to us. So, and also, I mean, to be honest, again, a little naive with the way budget is handled here in North Smithfield, I really thought we have to like to find out. So, one of the reasons, a couple of reasons, I thought, maybe we move it on to the next one. One, I thought, we don't have a budget yet, but I know we still need to keep moving forward. Two, I did send the outline of the policy that we had discussed to the attorneys to take a look at it. I don't have the results of that yet. And the other thing, which is actually somewhat fortuitous, thanks to Lisa, she somehow found this cumberland has the exact same structure that you've been asking for. So we are right now in the process of giving permission to plagiarize cumberland. And we will take that package that we had, we had worked on, and roll it into some, some, some of our cumberland approach. You know what, this just means your compliments, it falls finance directly in profit. There you go. So, you know, so after that, and Alex Epi, all those youth properties.
All those...
Yeah, oh, sorry.
I think the second meeting should be a long finished part.
And that's what we are going to give to, along with the salary comparisons in the area, and then some recommendations along those lines. But it will be a much, much nicer package when we see it.
Long as we can stay in the...
But we are going, we're gonna, we have to meet by the end of the month, correct? The thirtieth? We have to be on Friday night and Saturday, but we'll take the thirtieth. The twenty-ninth accounts for the meeting on budget, and assuming what, and not be... All right.
So should I, should I hold for that date, or are we just gonna put that...
Well, that's been before the end of the year? Technically? If it's the twenty-ninth, maybe we meet separately and don't address the budget, we just address what we need to address. And you meet, and then you meet here, and then you meet, and then...
We physically, I need a room to, Gator's Orange.
All right, we'll figure it out.
Not to mention, we know that by the time we have this working period...
It'll be...
Another thirty, yeah.
Right, we probably already have a meeting. All right. Okay, next issue? Anybody have any questions on that? Just get that well in advance, so it's, so it's, and we're ready. Okay, the stipend restructuring. So the epic journey of trying to restructure everything, so it worked out perfectly? We're not there yet. However, there, there are two that we really need to address, and so that's why I'm giving these two forward. So, these two stipends have been the same for a decade, so I'm looking to, I recommend making a change. So for coral director of the high school, I'm recommending an increase from fifteen hundred to six thousand. Now, I chose six thousand because right now, that is our highest salary that we pay, and that is going to be soon with life support. So again, we're moving into some uncharted areas. However, we do need to make the adjustment for this, for this position. And the second one that I would also recommend for an increase is the middle school band director from two thousand to four thousand. Again, expanded program, and has just won so many awards. Both of these programs are statewide, nationally recognized programs of excellence. And both of these directors have received the same certificate. So I think it's time to make the adjustment.
So is this for the next year, or is this...
It's how we want to handle this. Do you want to do something now, and retroactive to this year? Certainly going forward into next year, we need to address this.
If I may say something, and I feel very, very strongly about this. I have two children who graduated from our music program, and it was a wonderful experience for them way back when. So I really had to write my thoughts down, because I have a lot of different ones, so please be a goodie. I am not spend drift, but I am willing to spend money on programs that benefit the students, the school system, and bring pride and recognition to this community. We have a award-winning music program, and without a doubt, it's the teachers, and their commitment that make that program such a success. It's such a good program, the commissioner of education suggested it would be a good pathway for our venture into CTEs, because we already offer a lot of classes. And the reputation of our music programs could bring in students from other systems once we are accepted as a CTE provider. For the sake of the program and for our future plans, we can't afford to lose any more teachers from that department, because opportunities are better elsewhere. That's the reason they leave. And it happened once, because I feel that the school committee is not proactive, and that's enough. Our stipends for the music educators have been underfunded for years for the amount of work that they do outside of class. Their efforts have tangible outcomes, as evidenced by the sold-out concerts, which I couldn't even get into, and the reports that they bring home. Regina has put together a list of her hours above and beyond her workday, and I'm sure it's probably even more than she stated, but her previous stipend netted out six dollars and fifty cents an hour. She has a huge caseload, and she teaches additional class. She's been with us for twenty-two years, and has been underpaid with her stipends for the majority of those years. And John has no theater program anymore. We used to have one at Howell that started at the fifth grade, so by the time students got to the junior high school, they had experience, but that's no longer there. He has to start from scratch with the sixth graders when they get to the middle school. He teaches the middle school jazz band at six-thirty in the mornings. These are dedicated teachers who are the heart and soul of our fabulous music program, and we need to let them know that we appreciate all their efforts and all they do to make our program so stellar, and we can't afford to lose them. And that's just totally unacceptable to me. So I'm proposing higher stipends than superintendent's recommended for their both, and I think they're going to think I'm crazy, but I feel very strongly about it. So I'm actually going to recommend ten thousand for Regina and six thousand for John. And that's for discussion.
I'm happy to speak to this as well. I couldn't agree more. I know specifically with the career and tech program, if we want to talk about trying to bring more funding into the school district, the music program has the single greatest opportunity being able to do that. I think that career and tech program cannot be built without these two people in place who have every, to me, have every reason to want to leave after what they've seen, the way that the previous band director had been treated. I think if we lose either one of these people, we won't want, we will not be able to do this career and tech program in the way that we want to. The caseloads that these teachers take on goes way beyond what they do in the classroom every day, which is already a loving beyond. When you think about what they do every single morning, afternoon, evening, weekend, I think, I think we'd be lucky to be able to keep them even in this, and I just feel wholeheartedly support the high rate.
So, is that a motion in the second?
Oh, I would make a motion to go with ten thousand for the coral director, six thousand for the middle school director.
Okay, motion to debate in second, discussion. Superintendent, these two people, they teach an extra class, and I know that they get that correct, but not much to be judged for. They have a, they use their free period... So, for work. At the high school, and I'm not too sure if Regina's going to step forward to be the department head. Last year or this year, she was also the department head for music and arts, and for whatever reason, her language was inaccurate, and... And with that department head comes a department head period. And however, Regina felt she couldn't afford to teach one less class, so she used that department head period as a teaching period. So she, 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 she gave up the, that extra plan in period, that department head period so that she could teach. Now, this year, because of the larger eight grade going in, her class sizes are even larger. We have more kids coming into music. So she has right now scheduled four core classes at over sixty students each class. Now typically, teachers read cap at twenty-eight, on beyond the cap, because she feels, and the music program feels, is the best for the students, that class is also reversible, because the whole group is together, they can perform as a group. Now, and one of the things that I don't want to necessarily bring up or encourage, if we had, if we had to dial back to the twenty-eight cap class size that's in the contract, and we would have to, in order to teach as many music kids, hire more music teachers. So, we're giving a bargain. Thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, if I could. Sorry, the only, my only concern, Gina, and I appreciate why you want to go higher, my concern is that we're seeing a slice of the bigger picture here. You're still trying to redo that entire matrix that we saw before. I think it was last, last regular meeting, right? So it's, it's not, the people, it's not the, I don't have an issue with the money necessarily, but I want to see that bigger picture. I wouldn't support going above what we have as recommended. And I think you recommended that because that is what we currently have as a highest stipend. I don't have a call to reevaluate it at a future date, but I don't feel comfortable recommending higher, because if you do it on this one, you're now gonna have to do it across the board.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I've, I've been looking at is that, you know, pretty much across the board, we're paying less than other districts. Most of them look, they're okay, they're fairly comparable. Coral position was an outlier. There are other districts that pay significantly more and have fewer kids. The other one that I really wanted to approach was the department head stipend, but I, we cannot do that because that's tied to contracts. I'm okay, and I believe there should be a department head stipend. I have, and I've made it very clear, I have difficulties having a department head stipend and an additional period during the, rather, person has a stipend and keeps that period. But we can't make any changes because it's tied to contract negotiations. Again, I don't know the big picture, and I can't see at this stage, because we also don't know budget, doing full-scale changes to all the stipends. I can, however, support moving forward with an adjustment for these two, whether it's what I recommended or increased the money.
Superintendent, is there any other teacher that's receiving a stipend that has gone to the extent that she has, as far as allowing sixty kids by contract, she don't think twice?
No, but I would, I mean, there are, there are a couple of teachers with higher stipends, but it's for including over the summer. So the athletic director and the head of guidance, they get a fourteen thousand dollar stipend, but that's for including over the summer.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to emphasize is, is that if we had to, it's on what, your last comment, if we had to schedule classes in order to meet the requirement, we would, we would have to hire teachers.
There are no teachers that have as many students that they're servicing in an after-school or a school program as this one. So again, this is somewhat uncharted territory, because we do have the highest stipends, which is probably given outside of the summer, but that's why I recommend going to this gap. However, they are servicing more students. And then to call the board.
We'll call.
What was the last one?
I'm just motioning. To prove ten thousand dollar stipend for the high school coral director and six thousand dollar stipend for the middle school director. Mr. Lamarty?
Aye.
Mr. Bassett?
No.
Mrs. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
No.
Mrs. Blod?
Yes.
Motion carries, aye to.
Thank you.
Is that the last?
I think that's the next one.
I definitely...
Prostitute. Okay, next stipend, the retirement incentive package. Right, so we originally sent the nomination up to thirteen teachers. Eight teachers responded, and that was a retiring call, and we're bringing all the two teachers to them. That's halfway, and they're at forty, fifteen thousand dollars worth as the incentive to get the retired players for the school year ends, which will again help with some of the budget planning that we have. I did ask, do you have a... You vote each minute? Yes.
So if we would fill those replacements with step three on teacher, which is what we usually use in the budget, the savings in year one would be forty-two thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars between salaries and benefits. Superintendent feels... Superintendent feels pretty confident that we probably could hire someone who would do a lower step. So we looked at a replacement of step one of the bachelors, and that savings would generate fifty-four thousand seven hundred ninety dollars.
So that's one year?
That's year one.
Okay, so if they were going two years, it would be, I can say double, I know it's not double, but it's steps, but it'll be much more, three years, it would be triple.
And that was net of the thirty thousand.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, I just wanted to address one thing. Can you clarify, or can someone else remind me? My understanding when we approved this in May was that we approved you to explore the option. We did not approve it as a program. I just want to make that point clear, that the fact that we passed approval was approval of you to explore the option. If anybody else recalls differently, you know, feel free to correct me, but I think I went back and looked at the last meeting. So I, you know, I just don't, I don't want it to be out there in public view that, you know, someone thinks that we approved it wholeheartedly and we were going forward, that we approved you to explore the option.
The only thing that I can say, and my, I'm just off memory, is that we approved up to fifteen thousand dollars with the superintendent to make offers for teachers to retire, if I recall, now again, that may not be the exact language that was in my head, but I think that, and I think that if we needed more money or that we were going to, we were going to look at something else, we would come back. We would come back anyway, but that's just my recollection.
Do you remember how I voted?
You would, yes.
So maybe, maybe my recollection is off because I wouldn't have voted for it if it were approved or not. And for other reasons. I think I voiced those before. You know, you can't limit your higher to a step three, the cost is not a, is not a, it's not a proven fact that we're going to save money.
And I agree. To press, to press?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
But once we floated the idea and then had the retirement board come in and make their presentation, it was a goal at that point, I think. We really had to be, because it was not fair to be dangling a carrot in front of these teachers and then not go forward with it. So, you know, I think that once the process started, it was there.
I mean, obviously, that's what we care for tonight. I don't think anybody has been necessarily through that work.
Right.
Right? So I don't think that anybody's saying we could, even at the last meeting when this came up, we said there had been a request that the full school committee would be, right, before we had to vote, so I think that's why we're trying.
Okay, so let's try to get this motion down. So the motion to approve, to approve the retirement incentive package for two people who apply up to fifteen thousand dollars each. Makes sense, if I can?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion made?
I'll second.
In second? Roll call.
Mr. Lamardi?
Aye.
Mr. Bassett?
No.
Mrs. Jovianas?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Naio?
No.
And Mrs. Wada?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we would like the retiring players to be submitted before June thirty.
Tomorrow?
That's before June thirty.
Actually, I had one that I thought you never.
Okay.
Mason, something?
All right.
There was a joke going around Howell, and people would ask me when I would retire. And I always said, when you see a pine bark being dragged up Howell's Hill, you know she's going. Because of health reasons, I don't really want to go that way. So therefore, I thank you for this. This, this school has been part of my family for more than half a lifetime. It's been an honor, and a privilege to call them my kids, and I'm a GTO, grand teacher, because Mrs. Blake can tell us that many of our students, former students who've had the children, and it's been an honor. And every year when we hear, I hope you're not retiring, that's also an honor. So I thank you for enabling this for myself. And we may be gone, but we'll still be around for many decades.
Well, and we certainly thank both of you too for all of your years of service because we. And enjoy your time.
Okay, moving to new business, hopefully we have some good news, Superintendent.
I believe that you also have it on your list, some requests.
I didn't see that.
Yeah. You have it on second.
Second file.
As submitted, so as submitted in a separate document. So this is the first of what I hope we will recall, so as we start settling down the budget. And cumberland also is the, that new application interview process that we implemented. Tomorrow, we're closing the teacher, the tenure teachers' ability to request positions and apply for positions in their form tonight. Tomorrow, we're going to start looking at the applications and set up the interviews, and we'd like to rapidly move through this so that we, by the end of this month, have a definitive list of the coordinating dates.
Thank you. Do you have a motion or anything?
I guess just approve the callback of these teachers as submitted.
So, motion been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes. Does anybody else have a pro business? And motion adjourned. Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we adjourn.